2014. Please rise for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Introduction to members.
I'm Steve Tringali from Millville.
I'm Mike Buckley from Blackstone.
Brian Faulkner, Millville.
Kathy Robinson, Millville.
Diane Robyn, Blackstone.
Wendy Greenstein, Blackstone.
Erin Vinaco, Millville.
Bill Chaplin, Blackstone. So we have several things on our agenda. First, we have some business to take care of in terms of some motions regarding the Millville Roof Project. Does everyone have a copy of that? So I'm looking for a motion regarding the Millville Roof Project. I move that Perry P. Davis, interim superintendent of Schools B, and is hereby authorized and empowered to exec-- I'm sorry, to execute and deliver the project funding agreement, the agreement, and any amendments thereto for the Millville Elementary School Project, the project, between the Blackstone-Millville Regional School District and Massachusetts School Building Authority on behalf of the Blackstone-Millville Regional School District and to bind the Blackstone-Millville Regional School District to its terms and conditions.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Tringali, seconded by Mr. Buckley. Any discussion? All those in favor saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Buckley.
I move that Perry P. Davis, interim superintendent of Schools B, and is hereby granted the full legal authority under the laws of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts and all applicable local charters, ordinances, and bylaws to make final binding decisions with respect to the project described in the project funding agreement and any amendments thereto on behalf of the Blackstone-Millville Regional School District.
Motion by Mr. Buckley. Red-- by Mr. Buckley, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Tringali. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous. Okay. Millville Roof Project is complete. So just to set the tone for tonight, the people that are here, we have a 6:30 final interview with Ms. Margot Austin and a 7:45 interview with Dr. Andrew Keo, who have pretty much been in the district since noontime today. And then we will move to deliberations and vote on the candidate. Just to recap a little bit for people that haven't been following the process, we started this process back in October with, we hired Nezdek as a consultant to help us with our search committee, our search process. We began with a survey from the community as well as phone calls and outreach to stakeholders within the community to come up with a community profile of what the next superintendent should look like and what's important to the community. We then moved to develop a screening committee, which was led by Diane and Erin on the school committee. It was made up of about 12 community members that were absolutely wonderful in terms of going from 41--
Twenty.
Twenty-five, twenty-four. Down to six candidates that we then started the process here with interviews. And from there, we went to three candidates to go out and do some site visits. And now we are here with the two candidates tonight. So we will begin that process right now. We'll go get our candidate and we'll start the final interview. And if anyone in the public has a question that they'd like to ask that we haven't asked already, there's some index cards over there. You could write your question down. If I see anybody writing any down, I'll get up and bring them over here and I'll ask the candidate. Okay? Good.
Race. What's the weather look like tomorrow?
I was just thinking that. Do you hear any weather?
Do you have a weather report? I think it's nothing.
Two to four maybe? One inch?
We'll be here, right? You never want to trade a day in June for tomorrow, do you?
Well, delay would be nice. Wind delay?
But the delay will impact MCAS and every other thing. They'll make it a mess, so let's just grind it out. Just get through it.
Hi.
Hello.
Hi, how are you?
Nice to see everybody.
Welcome here.
Nice to be seen.
So I have a lot of materials with me. I received a request yesterday. They're not probably organized the way I would normally have done, but on short notice, I hope to give you some things that you had requested.
Okay. So we're just going to ask a series of questions, Margot. You know who we are, you've been here all day, you know. And the public will have a chance to ask some questions too if they want. And we'll start with my question, go around the room, and then go from there.
Sounds great.
All right?
Thank you.
Okay. Where is my question? All right, here we go. So now that you've had time to be in the district for, actually several times, you were here for some tours, and then you were here today since about 12, and you had a chance to spend some time with some faculty, staff, community members, tell us what you think the top three areas are in the district that needs to be addressed here. And then pick one of them and tell us how you would address it.
Sure. So it's been a very long day, I will say, as well as having been talking most of the day. So please bear with me with my voice and if I also take a moment to have a drink. So again, I've met with a multitude of individuals. So I think in looking at your top three issues at this time, I think one of your top issues has certainly got to be a look at the budget and some concerns regarding the budget. I think another one of your issues is in terms of curriculum and beginning a curriculum, planned curriculum review process. And then there are a few that go through my head for the third, so to jump in with a third one. I think separating from budget, which I'm going to come back to, would likely to be formulating a strategic plan. And I know that process was started, but came to a halt when you were having your superintendent prior to Dr. Davis coming onboard as an interim. So to address one of the particular topics with that, I think I've spoken a lot during the day about budget. And I think budget is certainly a significant issue for the district as the budget looks now. I think Dr. Davis has done a wonderful job in presenting the PowerPoint that I had an opportunity to see before it came out, in making sure everybody's aware in the community really what the situation looks like and how this is the state that that budget looks like right now. So with that budget, one of the things that I bring to the table is significant experience with budget deficits. So for the last eight years, I've been in Sutton Public Schools, and we have had a significant budget deficit for the last eight years. We are actually cheering this year because our deficit, as I've spoken to many constituents today, is only 184,000. And that feels like a wonderful thing when we've pretty much averaged $1 million each year in the last eight years. So a little bit different, and I think some of this may address some of the questions that were posed through the Nezdek Chair. We have had to, you know, look at difficult situations in order to, you know, close the gap as we speak of it. With that, here in a regional school district, you have an E and D or a zero balance E and D at this point, whereas in Sutton, we have revolving accounts. And those revolving accounts, we have built up over time as a result of several steps that I've been a part of. So to speak to some of those steps with regard to budget, we, I came into Sutton in 2006, and that's when we began purchasing transportation for our district to help offset the costs of special education transportation, which there is no reimbursement for for us as a local school district nor for you as a regional school district while others are somewhat reimbursable. We started slow, and we had a plan for it, and it's evolved. So we started with limited numbers of vehicles to transport simply our special needs students around our community because we build vocational programs. We also used it to transport our out-of-district students. We then built our fleet, so to speak, and purchased the half buses, and then we even purchased full-time buses, full-length buses. So with that transportation in-house, we're able to reduce the cost for transporting our athletes, transporting our students for field trips. We're also able to, again, support our students going out to the community to have authentic learning experiences on field trips, whether it's special needs or general education. Another way that we have closed that gap is we have brought students back from out-of-district placements. So that's an area, wearing my special head of hat, I had significant experience with. It does not happen overnight. It is a process, and it's about building relationships with parents who trust you and believe that you do have their children's best interests at heart. And the law was developed saying the least restrictive placement, and we know that for many of our students, this is their home, this is where they're going to live, this is where they're going to establish themselves. For some, they may not be able to go beyond here. So educating them as close to home as possible seems, you know, certainly beneficial to the student. But again, that's building relationships, and it's taken time. So reducing the cost of the special education percent of your budget, because that seems to be a large, it's over 10% at this time. So I think those are a couple of those areas. I think also, again, I've participated in building a leadership team, and we have those difficult conversations because if you have to cut a million or so dollars, you're not going to be able to do that by not ordering your supplies. Bottom line is that's going to be people, those are going to be positions that need to be cut. And I think we need to consider that as a leadership team, when you look, and the guidance that I'd like to support is the fact that we want instruction for our students. That's our primary task as a school system, to educate our students. So I think that those conversations need to occur to address that budget deficit.
Thank you, Margot. Erin?
I sent my question through Dr. Burke, actually, to both candidates so they could have some time to gather their answers. And I did ask if they wanted to bring anything to support the answer, and it looks like you did, and I appreciate that. So my question is, we need a strong background in curriculum and a deep understanding and/or a deep understanding of regional school district finance and business operations for our new superintendent. Please share, explain, give specific examples to me of your direct experience or any contributions during your career to each of these areas. And obviously, I think you just gave us a lot of finance and budget, so if you want to focus on the curriculum part, that's--
I will, and I'll just add to budget for a moment for you. So the regional process does look a little bit different. What I will say to you about that is there are, I think, more similarities than differences. So I'm going to send around a folder to you. In this folder, I have included the PowerPoint that we as a leadership team developed, and that's why I really appreciated the one that Dr. Davis did. And one of them is going to be the State of the Sutton Public Schools, and this is a five-year. It shows you what we had to do over the course of five years to get to the point we're at where we only had an 80, 184,000 deficit this year, that we still have to close the gap, and there are plans for closing that gap. Also in here is our PowerPoint for this year, so you'll be able to take a look at this as well. A couple of things that I did not speak to when I just gave that overview and looking for three top things that I can identify, having spent the day here, is another way that we have had to work with this. If we have had our high school look at changing our schedule. So we spent a couple of years looking at different scheduling options with the high school at the forefront and being the cheerleaders and the go-getters and go get the data. And so this year, we are rolling out a change of schedule, which provides for more electives for our students, which had been cut based on the cuts of staff that we had to make. So that's in this packet for you, as well as one of the ways that we've been able to add AP classes has also been for the MIMZI grants. So those folks that might not be familiar with the MIMZI grant, that is a Mass Math and Science Initiative grant. And what it is, it's a matching grant between a town and through the DSCA. And what happens is it permits you to have a whole lot more staff trained as advanced placement educators, opening more opportunities for our students to get those courses. And as a result of our cuts, which you'll see in the PowerPoint, we had to significantly cut back on our electives. So going forward next year, we've gone from, I want to say, and I don't know the exact number because it's visually in my head but not the number, I think we had nine electives based on all our cuts, and next year, I think we're close to 18 or 20. And that is significant stuff that always related to budget. So I'm going to send this around. I did not make multiple copies. I apologize for that on short notice.
Thank you.
So Erin, the next thing I think I'll speak to for you is the curriculum question. So as a small district, and again tied to budget, we made really some difficult decisions. So we don't have a curriculum director. We actually don't have a very large administrative team. We have a principal at each of our four facilities, and we have one assistant principal that is shared between two of our schools, so our high school and middle school. We do have that ability because of our single campus location. So that's been helpful. However, we would have more administration, but wanting to keep teachers in front of students, we did not do that. So we no longer have a curriculum director. So my title, Assistant Superintendent of Student Services and Special Projects, I have also facilitated our Curriculum Review Committee. So as a part of our Curriculum Review Committee, four years ago, we started the process by purchasing book schooling by design for every single faculty and staff member in our district, including our custodians, including our instructional assistants, our administrative assistants. And we mindfully planned out how this was to be rolled out. So it wasn't a book to go onto everybody's shelf and just sit there. We identified various committees, and each committee became responsible for becoming an expert on one chapter. I'm sorry, many of the educators in the room and anyone on the committee that's an educator knows that's a fairly common practice, so you don't have to spend time looking at the entire book as well as letting it sit on the shelf. So then they became the experts on the chapter, and it became rolled out for our entire district. When I pass this around to you, if you're not familiar with it, and if you're an educator, you probably are, because Understanding by Design and Schooling by Design by Wiggins and McTae have been around for a very long time. I folded down a page in here for page 60. You'll see it has lots and lots of use. This has what has been identified and by the research, the 10 components of what a good curriculum looks like. By having rolled out this entire book to our district, we then had everybody looking with a common lens. And it went then to building-based work where they looked at what the curriculum looked like at each of their buildings, and every one of our schools was actually at a different location with their work on curriculum. As they then evolved and looked at what they had, it was then ready for the next step to identify, okay, how do we get the missing parts, and how do we put this together as a document that folks can use? So that took us multiple years, and we started our curriculum work during the summertime. And participants in it were volunteers of teachers who wanted to participate. It was administrators who participated in that process. So we met during the summer during a summit to start the process, and then it rolled out through the entire school year. This year, we are natto at the stage where each of the buildings is almost ready to begin to create the actual documents that can move forward. And that had to do a lot with also the Common Core State Standards being put into effect as well. So with that, we now have done our research on a way to map our curriculum, and our district has chosen to go with Atlas Rubicon. And I know that's been under discussion here from my discussions earlier today. And the way we have looked at that is we looked for one of the schools to be the spearhead to start the process, and then to come bring that back to the other buildings in order to have people see this as, hey, I'd rather be doing it that way than my old way. And that's what has evolved in the process. So it wasn't mandated to use Atlas Rubicon, and what we did was we started with a very small group, and that small group then provided fishbowl opportunities for faculty and staff to see, and more and more folks are now biting on to the Atlas Rubicon. So our middle school is the furthest ahead. They are likely going to be the one that reaches the next step. And then our high school is a little bit behind, and part of that was looking at their schedule and identifying, okay, we have all of this on our plate, what are we going to focus our energy on? So that's on their plate for next year. Our Early Learning Center and our elementary school also had the standards-based report card, which they revisited this year because it has to now be aligned with the Common Core standards. So from what I see and hear in my discussions today, curriculum is something that has not been addressed here in the district in a consistent, organized fashion. So I think I do bring some experience. So I do have the two books I'm also going to share with you. This is Understanding by Design, and this is actually a professional development workbook. So different schools have used different pieces to go with that. So that's going to come around to you to take a look at. To further, just go back to, I think it's still a part of your question, Erin, and I may be hitting somebody else's question, curriculum as part of our strategic plan. So again, we developed a strategic plan as an outcome of two groups, the Curriculum Review Committee and our District Learning Team. So our Curriculum Review Committee and District Learning Team came together with other stakeholders from the community, including students, including educators, including administration, anybody who wanted to participate in the process, and we developed our strategic plan. As our strategic plan unfolded, we identified three common goals as a district that everybody bought into, and those three common goals, one was increasing the number of authentic assessments, and that goes back to curriculum. That's one of those 10 components I talked about. One of the pieces of that was also peer observations. So in the new teacher evaluation system, I perceive that as a coaching model, and within our district, because we agreed on peer observation, we created a menu of people's strengths. And then with that menu, teachers were allowed to identify folks they want to go out to and observe because they have a skill set that they want to learn more about. The teachers created a template to use as a discussion piece. When we first did the implementation, which was last year for the peer observations, we built into our teacher quality grant time for teachers to meet after school, so they were paid at their hourly rate for that work, letting them know that we felt this was valuable and their time was valuable. And they would meet and discuss that observation, get feedback, talk about things that they can do with that. So the next folder that I'm going to send around to you will have a copy of the strategic plan. It will also have the update of the strategic plan, which has different colors. That is posted to our website if anybody had gone. I know I referenced it last time I was here. The peer observation form, one of the samples is in here. Our professional development, which links right back to our strategic plan. So if I say this is important to us, we support it in professional development. The update on the standards-based report card. So it's listed on the front, and again, I'll move this further along to another group so that it doesn't get tied up.
Thank you. And just to be cognizant on time, I know we have probably six other questions that we have to answer to until 7:30, so--
So I hope, Erin, that addressed your questions.
I did also ask, just to share, you know, maybe just a spotlight of what your entry plan would--
Oh, I'm sorry, yes.
No, I didn't read that part yet, so do you want me to skip that one?
Let's move around if we have time. We'll come back to it.
Sure.
Brian?
Brian?
Hi. So as far as our facilities are concerned, although maintained by an excellent custodial staff that are committed to and take pride in the condition of our buildings, it's got some need for improvements and investment. Recognizing the fact that we have facilities reaching advanced age but a lack of committed short and long-term investment capital, how would you creatively find ways for us to upgrade and improve our facilities and infrastructure?
So Sutton is certainly had some aging facilities. In fact, I think you are aware we are in a building project, so certainly have had enough experience with MSBA for that project and even the bidding project because we had to rebid because we fired our contractor. When I came to Sutton eight years ago, I don't believe there was a proactive plan in addressing some of our facility's needs. I think as I spoke to each one of the principals, I have to tell you, I have commended every one of them for the way your facilities look. They are very, very well-maintained. Obviously, I can't see behind the curtain and see that you need a new boiler or see that there's problems with, you know, the HVAC system. So I think what the first, one of the first things is creating a plan and taking an assessment of what those things look like in order to be able to develop a plan over time. So if you have filters that need to be replaced, you have to have a cycle that your filters go on. If you have maintenance that needs to be addressed, then you need to, again, put a cycle in place to address those needs. I know you have done a lot of work on your roofs, so I got to see the new roof over at the complex, though still waiting for its snow pieces. I know that you are ready to go with the new roof. I believe it is at the high school, and then at Millville is the follow-up one from it because of my site visits, you know, to come out to your-- So I got to see a little bit of that work. So that's ongoing work, and these are the most important assets to our community, so we need to take care of them. I know you do not have a facilities manager, to the best of my knowledge, so you're running four individual buildings. I think part of that is sitting with the people that lead that process, your head custodians, to get a handle on where you are in looking at that facility work and putting in place a timeline to take care of those things and proactively plan so that you don't get into harm's way where you get a phone call and say, okay, the boiler just went down, we have no-- have no heat, what are we going to do? So I think that's a piece of it. I'm not sure from all of my research, I don't have the answers to the questions. If you're doing district-wide buying for your custodial supplies, I know that we have buildings that are owned and cared for by Millville and then the complex. And then I know as a region, you take care of the middle school and the high school. So I think those are all things that you need to take a look and assessment of those things, then I think you need to create a plan for those things. I think there are also opportunities in the different consortiums or collaboratives to see if you might be able to get into some better rates by doing some groups. One of the ways we've been able to save, which goes back to budget, is we were able to lock in a very low oil rate for next year, which any one of us would be happy because it's $300 and $3.09 a gallon. And I think every one of us as, you know, residents would love to have that rate. So I think it's work like that that needs to happen. And again, from all of my research, I don't know what that looks like right now.
Steve.
One aspect of the superintendent's role is managing your relationships with the school committee. Can you tell us your thoughts about how you go about beginning and then strengthening your relationship with this committee initially and then ongoing throughout your time as a superintendent?
Sure. One of the things is certainly be able to spend some time with the school committee and getting to know each one of you and understand your values and the things that you hold dear. So as a school committee, you've identified goals for the committee, but as individuals, you have each thing that you hold dear. As an educator, you may hold something dear. As a parent, you hold something differently dear. And again, your interests are the best interests of the students of Sutton. So I think it's really some well-spent face time. One of the things certainly coming in, I would like to recommend some kind of summit, if you want to choose to call it that, for the summertime to spend some time, but very organized with goals of, you know, what is the outcome that we are hoping to get from this time together? I think it is about building relationships over time as well as establishing trust and building consensus. So we can be individuals and we can have our whole own opinions, but at that same time, we have to sometimes put aside our opinions and say, what is in the best interests of BMR? And I think the only way that occurs is by that time and spending that time together. I am, I put in long hours. I'm an early morning person, so I tend to be here, tend to be at work at 6 o'clock in the morning, something you might have heard if you, during your site visit. And there are days that I'm there very late. Last night, I didn't leave till 9 o'clock, so it was a pretty long day. But it's putting in that time and building relationships, whether it's the school committee, the principals, the people in the central office who do a lion's share of the work for the superintendent. Because you don't have a business manager, the role of Donna becomes essential. Bridget's work as the assistant is just really, really important to that. And I think, again, everything that you need to do for a school district is based on those relationships, establishing trust, and nothing could go forward without it.
Thanks, Barbara. Wendy.
One of the first tasks of your position will be to hire and fill the position of Assistant Superintendent. So what are the most important qualities or what are you looking for in this position? And why would someone with those qualities want to come work for you?
So I recognized early on that was something that you were going to be looking for as an Assistant Superintendent, and I think that, I think when we post that position, and I assume it would be reposted when somebody new was coming on board, I think it may be a balance to see who is a good match for me if I was to become your superintendent. I think because of my title and because of our work to reduce our budget, I've worn many hats. So I think that I can wear many hats in this new role, so I would be looking for a partner in the Assistant Superintendent. I think somebody would look to come to work with me because I do work, look to establish a very strong partnership with somebody. I have ideas and a vision of, as I see, moving the district forward, but I'm one person. And there are going to be voices from all of you, voices from the community, voices from the students, and all the stakeholders of what it looks like to move this community forward. And I know you've identified those qualities in what you were looking for in a superintendent. So I think I work as a very, very nice partner with somebody, and I think one of my strengths is my ability to share and bring forth ideas and say, these are some things I have. What do you think of this? What can we do? How can we expand upon this? I think a big part of working with folks is allowing ideas to flow freely and then trying to narrow down those ideas to what makes the most sense for the work that we're going to do. I think somebody coming in at the same time, you know, again, I believe you'll have a committee, seeing as how hard you've worked to identify who's you're going to be, your next superintendent. You'll have a committee that will have a voice in that as well, so it's not just going to be my voice as a superintendent. I would like to think that person will have a strength with curriculum. That's what I would be looking for so that I can move that piece off my caseload. Do I have very strong ideas about it? I do. Have I facilitated that process? Am I fully entrenched with the Common Core State Standards? Sometimes more than any educator wants to be. But at the same time, I think it would be nice to have a person be able to wear that hat. I think it'll be nice to be able to have a partner who can look to plan and work with the leadership team as we tease out what's the professional development to support our process in addressing the curriculum and planning for a district-wide professional development plan that meets the needs of all our schools. I think that partner will also be valuable as we look to do some vertical work. I think, going back to Bill's question to me early on, I don't think I heard any sense of vertical work. I could be mistaken because, again, I don't get to address, you know, everybody and hear every piece, but it didn't sound like a lot of vertical work had taken place. So that's some of the characteristics, and I think I am very comfortable and not threatened by having somebody as a partner and reap the rewards. I'd like to say that the work we do, that everybody will celebrate.
Thank you.
Deanne.
How would you describe the role of superintendent as it relates to public education advocacy? And any experience in that area? And what would you think the superintendent's role should be?
I believe the superintendent needs to be the cheerleader of our schools and make sure that everybody is aware of the work that we are doing. And it was interesting, because I did my homework coming out, I think all of you will attest to that. And one of the things I did comment to Joanne, because she's spent a lot of time with me, and I know she does the technology, is you have great things on your district website, but I don't think they're out there for the whole community. And I think that becomes really important role of this superintendent to make sure the community knows that the work you're doing. Right now, I think Dr. Davis has started a lot of that conversation in when he presented the budget and the PowerPoints, but the community needs to be able to come behind and stand to see the things that you're doing in the school, why they're going to want to support increases in revenue, because that's what's necessary to support the work that this district has started. And it's very clear that a lot of this work has started, and some of it has been able to be continued, but some of it has been stopped, dead in its tracks. My conversation with somebody from, I want to say it may have been even the principal at Millville, discussion about the accreditation of the preschool program, how that process had started, and then it stopped. So I think it becomes really important for the superintendent to be the voice and not the only voice. So when you ask, what experience do I have, is we look to bring folks to the school committee forum to provide updates. So one of the things that we've worked very hard is, at each school committee, we like to have a student that can bring an update. And I know you've had students come to yours based on the minutes that I've been able to access. But also, the principals come forward and they do an update for their buildings. They talk about what's the school council work. We need to have conversations. I don't know if you have a district learning team, but we do have a district learning team. And so we report out the work of our district learning team, which I addressed earlier, was first to look at our mission, then we looked at homework. This year, we're looking at community service learning. And again, these aren't additional initiatives. These are topics that this think tank, our district learning team, has identified through consensus and surveys are important to review. We gather the information. We put packages together as a group. When I say that, we, last year, did homework. We sent out surveys to parents, to students, to educators to get a perception of how homework was perceived at each of our schools. That survey information and research about what they say about homework was then discussed in our forum. And then that work went back to our schools for work by their school councils. And as a part of this year's district learning team, we've now had follow-up. What's the outcome of the work you brought back to your school? And this year, we're working on community service learning. But those are all things that the community needs to hear about that's going on in your school. Very many schools are doing community service. Community service looks very different. That's making connections to curriculum. It's doing twofold. Therefore, our students are able to say, wait a second, I'm doing something that relates back to my curriculum, and at the same time, I am supporting my community. And the research says that students who participate in community service learning go on to do that as adults. So I think, again, the superintendent becomes the one that facilitates and gets the leadership team and gets our teaching teams to come up. If your sixth-grade team, who I had in great showing from the sixth, one of the sixth-grade teams today, to come up and share the things that they are doing. I don't know that the community always knows about it. The other thing that we have implemented is we have newsletters at each of our buildings. Those newsletters are posted at our website, and they do, hey, this is what's going on. As appropriate, we also have implemented alert now messages. I'm not sure what system you use, but I'm sure you have a system. And those alert nows will do a blast out about something that's going on. So I think that it becomes imperative that the superintendent is the frontline person but making sure the community is aware of the hard work and the dedication that goes on and the student achievement and student celebration, inviting community members into our schools.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Buckley.
I'm just reviewing some of your data. My question is more focused on, we've heard a lot about programs and curriculum and so forth. One of the most important things here is really the reason why we're here, and that's children. And I'm just wondering, as the leader of the district, explain to me, explain to everyone here, what your process would be to get to know our children?
So I think I shared this with most of the people that I've met today. I am highly visible. I would expect to be in your schools. I do not expect to be taking the place of a principal in any way, shape, or form. Ed reform makes decision-making, and each of those buildings, the responsibility of a principal ultimately, though I am responsible for those principals. My first steps into your district would be making sure that each day I am in at least one building, if not more. I pride myself, I was very specific in where I chose to apply for my first administrative position in Sutton. And I did that because I was able to be entrenched in that district. If I am in that district, you will find me at the doorway, either in the morning welcoming students into my school, or at the end of the day, saying goodbye to the students. I know the kids. I am very fortunate there, and I was thrilled to find out your central office is actually located in a building. So obviously, the easiest place to be will be at the high school. I would expect to be in classes. I would expect to be seeing students in the cafeteria. I can give you a very good example. Last week, even though I'm the Assistant Superintendent, I went on a field trip. And I went on the field trip to a place called, oh my gosh, I'm just drawing a blank, it's the Fun Factory Zoinks. I'm sorry, I was drawing a blank. Zoinks in Oxford. So I don't know if anybody here would be familiar, but it's very similar to what, at one time, maybe Chuck E. Cheese, for those of us that are a little older, but not quite as over the top as that. But I went on a field trip. I built into my schedule because I wanted to be able to see those kids in that environment and see what it brought to them. Zoinks happens to be a place where there are actually three rooms, and they've done a beautiful job, and educator must be part of it, where they spend 45 minutes with physically engaging activities. So they have all those blow-up toys that our kids love to do. I slid down blow-up toys. I played with balls. I was hitting these things that you knocked down, and I was doing it with the students. I also asked the educators if it was okay with them if I did their, did walkthroughs during that time, because I felt what beautiful, authentic experiences for our kids and for me to be able to talk to the four standards of the new teacher evaluation. So that's just one example where I chose last week to go. Each year, I go several times to different field trips. We send, I have throughout my district, my students attending swimming at the Whitemsville Community Center. So I've gone out to see my students swim. And again, these are our neediest students that we are teaching swimming, but what a great gift that we're giving to parents that children are water-safe. My first 28 years of my career was spent in the classroom with children. I want to be in a district where I can see impact affect children. I would like to have principals notifying me when certain events are taking place so that I can choose to go see those events. And I don't just mean the big events, like the sporting events, which I would be, would be planning to attend. I mean that that class planned, and they wrote their own play as an outcome of some English language arts work. I want to go in the classroom, and I want to see those kids perform that play. I would expect to walk in classrooms, and the same way the new teacher evaluation system is looking for our children to know why they're doing stuff, I'd like to be present in classrooms where teachers don't stop what they're doing, kids don't stop what they're doing, nobody thinks it's anything unusual that you see me as part of what I hope will become your learning community.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So go, Kathy, and then we'll come back to Erin.
Sure. There's been much talk in this district about restoring trust between the school district and the community. You've spoken a little bit about that, but what specific steps would you recommend to begin solving that problem?
So I think, again, some of the things that I've talked about would be opening our schools and inviting community members in. I also believe I'd like to set up, obviously, some forums because I don't, I have to understand what the distrust is about. So I think there would be some opportunities for that that would need to be planned and obviously advertised so folks would know that these are occurring. And it would have to go beyond just the parents of our students because they get it, they know. It's the, it's the majority of folks who don't have students enrolled in our schools, and therefore, when we say we need more money, they don't understand why we need that money. So it becomes, again, I think Dr. Davis started that process, and I think those of you that have looked at our budget pages, they look very similar to what Dr. Davis has brought forth to you. It's establishing that transparency as we're going through, building principals needing to defend their budgets. This is what I say I need, but why do you need that? When we look at things like purchases that are going to maintain our facilities that Brian asked me about earlier, they need to come out and do the tours. I think it was phenomenal that you videotaped that. I happened to come out there. One of the reasons I came out was to see what kind of response for the community who was invited in. And there were, there were not a lot of people that came to participate in those tours. So I think that those are being broadcast now so folks can take a look at the state of your buildings. I think it's also for, important for them to come in and see the hard work that we're doing. And with that hard work, again, the same way, where are the opportunities we can invite them in to see parts of the work that we're doing? So I think setting up specific meetings to understand what the distrust is about and recognizing it's not going to go away in a day, but being recognizing it's not going to know away, go away in a day, but being very mindful to say, okay, here we are anew. How do we move this forward? How do we begin to work collaboratively? And when we talked about the strategic plan that I think needs to be, you know, continued, if you want to, I don't know if it's in a state to be continued or need to start anew. I'm not ready to make that call, because I'm only one person. Having those folks, really calling on folks to participate in that process, because that way, we can get them partners with us.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Erin.
So the last part of my question was, if you could share with us what your entry plan would look like?
So actually, part of it has to do with just the question that Catherine did ask me. So obviously, as somebody coming in new, I would want to provide opportunities for folks to meet with me in, in different forums to learn about me. I'd spend a lot of time listening at first. So today has not, I've done some of that listening, but I've also had a lot of questions thrown at me. I've also had people that really just wanted to hear me speak. So I haven't had the opportunity to do as much listening as I would like to do. So I think that becomes a first part of the process, coming into your district. I think there's going to be some, need to be some significant overlap, and I love that, you know, Dr. Davis has a plan, you know, he came in, said he's going to support you, and he would, you know, he wants to talk about a transition, which I'm right there with him, which means lots of long hours, because I'm still going to be tied to my current district, and yet still see myself driving down 146. So it's a very easy mix. I go from Boston Road, take my, right on to 146, and I'm right down here. So it's even closer than from my home. But I think there's going to have to be those, those overlapping times. I see meeting with the leadership team. Leadership team has, you know, their own individual ideas, and I think they're just starting to come together as a group, knowing that your oldest, your, you know, most senior member of that leadership team, I believe, is Carol Brown, being here four years. I could be wrong, but I think, if I'm recalling, so Carol was the oldest, and then I think after that comes Vashia, maybe, and then Justin at the same time, and then the newest being, maybe Mike. So I don't know how they've had an opportunity to meld. One of the things I would strongly support is what I would see as a leadership team with two different functions. One is looking at the business piece of it, and the second part being instructional leadership. So again, at that time, you're then taking a look at the instructional piece outside of, well, how's our budget? Where are we in the budget? Separate from that, I think you need to have what I would call a cabinet meeting, and it's something we established in Sutton. And our cabinet meeting is when we are talking about, on a weekly basis, what's the budget look like, what's going on? We know special education is a moving target. We know that children move into the district, children move out of the district. Unfortunately, when they move out, usually, we still remain responsible. It never seems like they leave and we end our responsibility, but it seems whenever they come in, we're responsible immediately. So I think, again, the entry plan is to listen and hear a lot of what's going on. I think it's to meet with this group, to understand what are the red ticket items that we don't have any time to lose, that we need to move on. I think if I were chosen and selected as your superintendent, I would want to be participating in these next discussions about your budget, because I think this impacts everything going forward. And I think with that, about six months from now, and I mean literally from now, so if I was selected tonight, six months from now, I probably could update that entry plan, because I would not be looking to come in horses, running ablaze, and make changes. I want to get to know folks. I've done my research. I know about your district, but I don't know your students. I don't know your parents. I've had a small connection, but I don't know those folks.
Thank you.
Great. Any other questions from the committee?
What's that?
No.
So Erin, I have more materials if you're interested. I think I gave you stuff to look at. I don't know if you're interested. I have here from district learning team. I have here standards-based report card binders. So all kinds of stuff.
I appreciate it, and I know the time you get into it, but I, I'm very satisfied with everything that you've presented, so.
So do you want to have a few final, final comments?
Sure. So I'll, I'll be ready to stop talking in about two minutes. When I get home, my husband will say, so tell me about your day. And I'll say, I'm sorry, I'm really talked out. So I've shared with many of you individually, but I just want to let the, the community know, I have been very selective of where I've put my name in to be a superintendent. I did not randomly choose BMR. School spring has lots and lots of postings. Next deck, I get them all. So whether it's Dyton, Rehoboth, Dudley, Charlton, so they all come across my desk, because as in a superintendent who's now ready to spread her wings and become a superintendent, I, I receive those. So I have cautiously put my name into the places that I feel I am a good match, based on my skill set, and based on what I've learned of your needs. I believe further that I am the right candidate for you. I have thoroughly enjoyed the process, though a little lengthy. And I know it is a very, very important decision for your community. As I've said, I sat on the other side just four years ago, selecting my superintendent. So I hope you have all the information you need about me. I think you probably have, in some ways, more, that may even cloud the picture. But I really would love the opportunity to come work with you, to support the needs of the students of Blackstone Millville. So thank you for your time and your commitment to this process, because it is a process.
Mark, I also want to thank you, because it's been, it's been a long process, and I think I can speak for the committee, where it's been a really good process, getting to know you in your district, coming here. You know, you're clearly someone who's prepared, does their homework, and is driven. And I, I think this committee appreciates that. So it's going to be a very difficult decision tonight. So we'll be in touch, you know, tonight, probably.
Great, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Just get my materials back. Thank you. So much to meet you. Thank you so much. Yeah, thanks. Thank you. Yeah, you have children. I heard that tonight, I wasn't sure about until then. Yeah, so thank you. Thank you. Yeah, great, thank you so much. Bye, Keith. Thank you.
And here's a tortoise, he's walking on crutches.
Thank you. Thank you. Coming in. Hi, I'm Susan. Thanks for coming in.
I just had to say. Have a great one.
Send him he was, should I read him?
Well, the problem is, is he sent me all his stuff electronically, so I don't want everyone else to have to get it.
Well, hopefully, he brings it.
He can speak about, he can speak to.
This is his example, so I don't want other people to not have their hands on it.
Awesome. Did you forward to everybody?
Yes.
Okay. I got him. I got three.
When you send it?
I just did it.
Okay.
You did get them, like?
Good stuff.
Is everyone okay starting, like, right away?
He's ready.
If he's ready, I mean, I think he's there. I think we could probably start, and so we can, so it's not snowing. People are coming just to see him, do you think?
They did last time. They did last time.
We can, you know what, how about we take about five or six minutes?
7:35. Just give them five minutes.
All right, okay.
Welcome.
Welcome back again.
I'm going to wave instead of trying to walk across the wires.
Remember our names, huh?
Try something different this time.
So we want to thank you for coming and spending half a day at least, or it's actually a full day now, it's almost eight hours now, in the district and getting to know us a little bit better. So we just have, we each have some questions that we'll ask, and, you know, feel free, it's kind of ongoing dialogue. So I guess I'll start. Now that you've had time to learn more about a district leading up to today and spending some time with faculty, staff, and community members, what do you think of the top three areas that need to be addressed within Blackstone Millville? And what would be the step-by-step way you would go about tackling one of them?
Well, I would say top three probably, top three would probably be budget concerns would clearly be number one, because I think that from everything I've heard, people are feeling as if it's tough to move the district forward if, if we're constantly fighting, you know, financial pressures to keep our expenses down. So I'd see the budget as a key concern. Tied into that are so many things, but I think there is, there is a concern with teacher And that is not to say that they are not happy with their district, but I think what I mean by that is that teachers are feeling perhaps discouraged by myriad of issues, including kind of the mandates that come from On High on a regular basis, whether from the state or the federal government, and coupled with the, the expectations of their building administrators and the expectations of the district. I think the teachers are feeling a little overwhelmed and hoping for a change of course and some consistency. So I would see that as number two. And number three, I guess I would say number three is really, it also centers, in my opinion, around the budget, but it's a little bit different, and that is the decision by so many students to, to leave town and go to other school systems. When you consider that the, you know, the budget request within special ed, I mean, within regular education this year was in the $780,000 range, and $300,000 is going out in tuitions, that's a phenomenally high number. That's just an unacceptably high percentage. And I think that, so I see that as in the top three concerns. There are many, many others, obviously. Every school district has concerns. Curriculum development was mentioned, professional development was mentioned. It's not to say that those are not important, because they all are. Technology came up quite a bit, but I think the, I think that the, and they're all interconnected. I guess my initial plan for addressing all of these really is, is in how I come into this district. And I know a question has come forward about entry plans. I think it's essential that as I come forward, I make connections with people, make connections with people within town, make connections with people within the system, teachers, administrators, town government representatives. People have to know who I am, and I think that it's not just about making connections and getting to know people, because this is, in fact, how I would go about attempting to address the budget concerns. One of the issues and challenges, I think, that all school systems are facing is that it's not always easy to articulate what exactly your struggles are and why you're asking for funding. And if you can't articulate it well, people are going to be suspicious. For example, if you ask for a certain amount of money in the budget, and then people see that you're hiring next year, and you said you didn't have enough money, you weren't going to be able to even, you know, you were going to be cutting all over the place, and then you have to hire, you may be hiring because people left, and may have nothing, it may be budget neutral, but people will perceive it that you're hiring because you're wasting money. That's a communication issue, and that, in fact, is a trust and relationship issue. People have to know that whoever's in charge of the district is straightforward and honest and transparent. And so I think that my entry plan would speak to literally going forward and meeting with the key stakeholders wherever possible, and attending as many events and activities as possible in the early months of my, my stay here. And, and finally, setting up open office hours where people could come and express their concerns, and I could learn more about the lay of the land. So, you know, I don't have any magic, any magic bullets for how to create money, create revenues where there aren't any, but I do think that we are more likely to be successful at obtaining funds from the communities of Blackstone and Millville if we are very, very clear in what, in expressing what our needs are, and that we can prove consistently that we ask for what we need and not for luxuries. So I see the budget concerns as probably the number one concern, and I, and I see that as the initial stages of my going about addressing it.
Great, thank you. Erin.
Hi, Erin. So as I said before, I did reach out through Dr. Burke and sent my question ahead of time, so the answers could be thought out and prepared. And Dr. Kio did email me quite a bit of information that I did just forward to everybody, including the entry plan and many examples of, of your work, which I'm sure you're going to speak of. So my question, as I sent it to you, is please share with us, actually, let me back up. We, we need, in this district, a strong background in curriculum and/or a deep understanding of our regional school district finance and budget operations. Please share with us, explain, give specific examples to us of your direct experience and any contributions during your career to each of these areas. And as I said, please feel free to bring visuals, data collections, and anything else you want to use to support your answer. I hope it wasn't too overwhelming.
No, it was, it was absolutely fine, and it was, it was good for me to actually take some time to look at some of that work, because sad but true, over the years, I have done so much that I literally forget what I have in my files. And when I go into my computer and look, I'm sometimes amazed at some of the curriculum initiatives or, you know, professional development activities that I've led personally. And it didn't take me that long, frankly, to gather up those materials to send to you, and I hope that's okay, that I sent them electronically, because it would have taken me forever.
That's fine.
To send those, I mean, to print those out. I just frankly don't know if I had enough ink in my printer. So the, some of the things that I am most proud of, that I included in that work, were in fact, the curriculum work related to professional development activities around curriculum development. So there is a, a unit map template in there, and I've noticed when I surfed the website for Blackstone Millville, that you do in fact have curriculum, a curriculum tab on the district website, and when you click onto that, you can see the topics that are taught, and maybe a little bit more definition in some instances, but, but I think that we can dive deeper. I think that the expectation is that we should be diving deeper. I think teachers and parents and probably students feel we should dive deeper, and that by that, I mean, we should be. website, and when you click onto that, you can see the topics that are taught, and maybe a little bit more definition in some instances, but, but I think that we can dive deeper. I think that the expectation is that we should be diving deeper. I think teachers and parents and probably students feel we should dive deeper, and that by that I mean we should be a little more specific about what a kid can be expected to learn in a course. So, that unit map template that I sent you was in fact what I used with my department heads as they worked with their teachers on developing curriculum documents for their courses, and it was actually as a result of an NEASC request, because they too will ask for more than just the topics. They're gonna want to see maps that include essential questions and overarching objectives and, and the, and the standards that will be met, and the kinds of assessments that you will use. They'll ask for those things, and I think that, you know, a system has to have those things. Oftentimes, people will say, well, do you look at the data? You know, the easiest data to look at is obviously, and I mentioned this when I was asked about data last time, is obviously the MCAS data, and that's really simple as to why. The reason is because every 10th grader, for example, or 8th grader, and elementary student will take MCAS. They take the same test, basically, and they get, and you know what the test is on, because it's on the mass curriculum frameworks. Kids get the test, and you can see, well, they made progress or they didn't. That, that format shouldn't just be the only place, it's true, that shouldn't be the only data that we collect, but unfortunately, because we don't usually have written curriculum documents and common assessments that assess those unit maps, because we don't usually have that in schools, and I'm not convinced that we do at Blackstone Millville, we can't have our own data, in-house data, that's consistent. So, I see that as a huge, hugely important thing, and that's why I included that in there. Looking at student work, this is another important initiative related to curriculum and professional development. If teachers are in fact going to look at student work, they're gonna get around the table and see what the kids produce, but there isn't consistent curriculum in place, there aren't consistent curriculum documents, then teacher A may put something down on the table that's completely different than teacher B and C, because teacher A is teaching whatever he or she thinks is important, but it's not in fact from a specified curriculum that everyone is sharing. So, how can you get around the table and look at student work if you don't teach the same material, or at least something close to the same material? Same thing holds true for common assessments. You know, how can you look at, at data if you're not assessing in a similar way? So, I included that as well. I, you know, I don't know that I necessarily want to go on and on, but the Mobiquity Innovation Project is another example, I think I talked about that last time, where we have put together a project where we're encouraging kids to work in groups, and we're rewarding them for, for broadening the, the group in terms of diversity. So, we're encouraging them to work with kids who they don't necessarily know, or kids who have strengths in some areas but not in others, and that they work together because we think this mimics what they will encounter in the real world. I had a chance to go to the Cambridge Innovation Center a few years, a year ago, and watched how these little companies operate, and, and oftentimes, they're companies of three or four people who get around the table and problem solve. And so, the Innovation Project, which is being done in coordination with Mobiquity, a high-tech company that builds apps in Wellesley, is an example of a, I think, a high-quality learning experience that's innovative, that requires collaboration and communication, and a lot of the 21st century skills that the kids will need when they get into the real world, such as the Cambridge Innovation Center, where these tiny little entrepreneurial outfits conglomerate.
What about the regional school district finance and business operations part? Do you wanna touch on that a little?
Definitely. So, for me to, to talk about, you know, working with a regional budget, I, you know, other than my experiences at, on the Sherburne School Committee, I can't point to having spent time in a regional system, at least building budgets. I did obviously work for the Blackstone Millville Regional School System, but my experience with developing the regional budget is not, is not lengthy. That said, my budget that I do build, I build myself with input from my department leaders, is this year, we are seeking a $14.5 million budget for a staff of over 200 teachers and support staff. It is highly scrutinized. I go through the process of trying to meet the district's goals and the goals outlined in the strategic plan and the school improvement plan. It's publicly vetted, it comes under scrutiny by the advisory committee, where I have to present it to members of the advisory board and the school committee. It has to pass, pass a pretty significant test before it moves forward, and that's something that I've been doing for a while. So, it is true that if I were to become the superintendent here, it would be at a different level, but the one thing that I do know about the budgeting process is that it's not done independently. It's done with a lot of input from a lot of people. We're trying to, I've heard it referred to steering the Titanic. We're trying to satisfy the needs of many, many different constituent groups. With three elementary schools and a middle school and a high school, all competing for the same dollars, all having significant needs, many, many people will have to weigh into it, and it has to be a collaborative process. But I do think that what I've seen of the work thus far that you've done with your budget, it doesn't intimidate me or frighten me. I didn't see any language that was foreign to me in my conversations with Dr. Davis this morning. He, the documentation he gave me was quite familiar. No, I haven't worked in a system where we have, you know, a different kind of bus service because we're a regional system. So, those are things that I'd have to get accustomed to, but one of the things that I think is important to mention is that if I were in fact selected to be your superintendent, the transition I think would be incredibly smooth, because I would have that opportunity to work with Perry Davis, somebody I know very well, as the superintendent when I was in Sherburne on the Sherburne School Committee. And so, I think that I could have many conversations with Perry and, and really get his take on the process and anything that I'm not familiar with, and I think it would be, it would be a comfortable transition. So, I'm prepared for that. I know I have to convince you of that, but there's, there's nothing worse than going into a job that you're not prepared for. So, if, if I didn't feel prepared for it, I wouldn't stick with this process.
Okay. Well, I, and the entry plan part, you did touch on it, and we kinda waited till the end, but if there's something you want to add, we'll go back to that, but he kinda touched it.
Brian.
Our facilities, although maintained by an excellent custodial staff that are committed to and take pride in the condition of our buildings, have some needs for improvements and investment. Recognizing the fact that we have facilities reaching advanced age but a lack of committed short and long-term investment capital, how would you creatively find ways for us to upgrade and improve our facilities and infrastructure?
Well, I think that you can always seek grants for energy efficiency, for energy efficiency in your windows or in your, perhaps using solar panels. There's money available for things like that. I think that we, I would hope that we would be exploring all those avenues. I think that ultimately, what we are talking about is two communities absolutely committing themselves to not letting these facilities fall down. And when I was here, one of the things that was crystal clear to me was that there was great pride in these school buildings, and that I used to hear over and over, do you realize how old this building is? And that was then, in, in the high school. People spent a lot of time and energy ensuring that upgrades were made when they were needed, and that's, that takes a commitment from the leadership and from the communities. So, as, although the creativity will get us part of the way there, coming up with creative solutions, grants, energy savers, things like that, you know, sensors, sensors in your lighting, things like that, that, that save money, in terms of keeping the facilities upgraded, it, you, you have to make those capital investments, and the community has to, has to ultimately step up.
Steve.
One aspect of superintendent's role is managing the relationships with the school committee, and you said you were on a school committee yourself. Tell us about your thoughts about how you go about beginning and strengthening your relationship with this committee initially, and also ongoing throughout your time as superintendent.
Well, the, the important thing about relationship building is that it, it's very much dependent on contact, so there need to be as many contacts as possible. One of the things that I've learned is that you don't form trusting relationships in a year or two's time. It just, it doesn't happen that quickly. It takes four, five, six years before people really trust you, depending on how much contact you have. If you have more contact, then you speed the process. So, I think it's really important that, that I make every effort to have conversations with members of the school committee as often as possible. So, and not just about business. We have to know who, who we are. It's important to me that, that I feel that you know who I am as a person, what matters to me, that you know that I have a family, that you know that I care very much about my daughters and their future. Those things are important, and that's how you get to know me and trust me as a person. And the same would hold true for me with my relationships with all of you. So, I'd like to speed that up. Unfortunately, I know that it takes time, and I also know that it's really important to have certain protocols. It's, I think that that's important. I know that we all want information instantly. You don't have to look far to, to see that. If you watch our kids, you'll find the best example. They want instant, instant information, and, but sometimes they can't have it. They want instant access, but sometimes they can't have it. It's amazing to me that kids will come right up when I'm in the middle of a conversation and interrupt to tell me some maybe good news, but that's what they do, because that's kind of the, the time that we live in. People want instant access and instant information. I feel unfortunately, a lot of times, you have to wait. People have to wait. I have to wait, we all have to wait. I think it's really important that I communicate directly with the chair, that relationship be the strongest, that that's where the investment in my time and energy and vice versa should come first, because he or she will be the spokesperson for the committee, and we want to protect those, those protocols. So, it's not to say that we would not have conversations and engage in deep conversations, meaningful conversations, and, and strengthen those relationships, but the key one initially would be with the chair.
Thank you.
Does that answer your question?
Yeah. Wendy.
One of the first tasks of your position will be to hire and fill the position of assistant superintendent. So, what are the most important qualities, or what are you looking for in this position? And why would someone with those qualities want to come and work for you?
Well, hopefully, they'd want to come and work for me because, because I would value them and hopefully inspire them, and they'd feel like they were becoming, or joining part of a really positive, successful team. The, the qualities that I'd be looking for would be dependent on, on kind of the infrastructure that exists, so I need time to at least look at what we have and what shortcomings need to be filled. So, are we managing, are we staying on top of our business operations? If not, then do I need somebody who has more business experience? If our business operations are functioning well enough, and I can contribute to that and feel comfortable with that, then is that, then is that emphasis going to rest more on the curriculum, instruction, and professional development work? So, I can't say 100% what those qualities would look like until I've been in the system a bit to see what's working and what isn't, but I can tell you, just educationally, I want somebody who has a quality education, I want somebody who loves kids, and by that I mean would do anything for kids. I think it's that love that sustains us frankly, when times are tough in these jobs. We keep going because we know, we know that it's making a difference for kids. So, I'd be looking for somebody who values those kinds, who values that, values kids. I'd be looking for someone with experience and, and can demonstrate that they have, have implemented and led change, and that they can inspire people to change. All change is difficult, not too many places. Many educators sitting around the table, you know, that change is often met with resistance, so you need people who can bring people forward and convince people to get out of their comfort zones. So, I'd be looking for somebody who has those qualities. I'd be looking for someone who has a sense of humor, and is kind of fun to be around, and is not so, so tired and burned out that they, that they don't enjoy the work anymore. So, there's, that's a starting point. I, I saw something somewhere, you know, you basically have to be a miracle worker. That's kind of what I'm looking for.
So are we.
Thank you.
Diane.
How would you describe the role of superintendent as it relates to public education advocacy? And tell us about whatever your experience might be in the series.
Thank you for that question, because I feel really strongly about public education. I feel we are at kind of a delicate crossroad in our society, in that far too many communities are now saying, actually, education's the responsibility of people who have children. That is completely unacceptable, in my opinion. So, I feel like it's my responsibility as a superintendent to remind the public always that an educated population is key to our success, not just, it's not just key to the, to the people who have children. If we want our society to sustain itself, then we need an educated population, and it's in everybody's best interest to support it. So, I think that as the educational leader for Blackstone Millville, and whether as the superintendent or any other educational leader in the system, it's critical that we remind people that it is a public school, and public education benefits the entire society. And I think that I would just consistently send that message home.
Thank you.
Michael.
Good evening.
Good evening.
We've heard a lot about, about curriculum and budgets and all that stuff, but the most important thing that we do here is, is how we handle children. So, my question to you is, how do you get to know our kids?
Well, frankly, that's one of the reasons that I've debated whether I wanted to become a superintendent. I came into this profession because I love kids. I love being around kids. They, they bring, they bring great joy to my life, and so, I've always kind of sought out ways to be with the kids. So, it's never been something I've had to work at, it just happens. It's why I actually went into education, because I, I found that was one thing that just kind of came to me, which was connecting with kids. And I think the way that And I think the way that I would do it here is probably the same way that I've done it throughout my career, is I'd find ways to engage kids, whether it's on the sidewalk in front of the school, or in their classrooms, or perhaps in my own classes. In my case, at Wellesley High School, I do teach a class, and it's not easy. I'm a busy guy, but it's really important for me to do. It's important for me to let the kids know that I'm a human being, like them, and to let them know that I'm passionate about things like art. I think that the most important thing that we can do as educators and as adults is model good behavior, and model what we think is important for our kids to see. So I think it's really important for my students to see me engaging in learning. If I'm going to be the educational leader, then it's really important for kids to see me learning and valuing learning. The ways that I do that, it's not always through a nice conversation or something like that. I give out books at graduation every year, and I give the kids books that matter. I give them important historical books, and I sign it and explain why I'm giving it to them, so that they will hopefully think about that and why I wanted them to read it. So I'm actually engaging that kid down the road potentially, when they finally pull that book off the shelf and read it. Books like Team of Rivals. You know, when the kids get that book, they want to run for their lives, because it's about 600 pages. But they know that it's something that mattered to me, that I valued. So I just, I just look for every opportunity to engage them and to let them know that I'm a real person. And I think I would do the same thing here. When I was at Blackstone Millville as an assistant principal, I loved going on trips with the kids. I went on a trip to, in fact, the one time I stood on the World Trade Center towers was with a trip of Blackstone Millville kids. That was just a few years before 9/11. I look for those opportunities to engage kids and for them to see me as a person. So hopefully, what I like about being a superintendent is I'd actually get the opportunity to do that with the younger kids as well, which is something that I've really, really enjoyed doing. You know, why they consider me a celebrity in a school system, I don't know, but I always get picked for Celebrity Reader Day, and I go down and see the elementary kids, and I love that. I absolutely love it. And I was telling some of the people that I met today that at one of my last experiences doing that, this third grade girl came up to me. And I can't remember her name, which is a shame, because that was what she asked me. But she said it was something like Maggie McKenna. And she said, "Mr. Keough, don't forget me. When I come to the high school, my name is Maggie McKenna, and I'll be there in a few years." And I said, "Okay, I'll do my best to remember that." And it was great. It was nice getting to know the younger kids for a change. So I love those opportunities. I look for them, and that's what I would try to do.
Kathy?
Yes, there is much talk in the district about restoring trust between the school committee and the, yeah, school district and the community. What specific steps would you recommend in solving that?
So I think that, you know, it's hard for me to say where we went wrong. You know, where did the trust kind of, trust train come off the track? But apparently, from what I've heard from some of the people today, there is concern about trust. So I think that the way that you do it is you just make sure that you demonstrate honesty and integrity all the time throughout the process. I think with budgets especially, people are suspicious. But I think with everything that the leader does, it's important that they demonstrate integrity. So if you, if you say, you know, you stand for something, say you stand for cooperative and caring relationships, you really stand for that. You say it all the time, but then you don't model it. You're completely disrespectful to someone, then they don't trust you. They say that person's just talking out both sides of their mouth. They're not genuine, they're not sincere. I try to demonstrate that I'm sincere about what I say, and I think if you do that enough times, people do trust you, even if they're angry with you. And I'll never forget Mr. Hartnett saying to me, said, "I can't figure you out." I said, "Why?" He said, "Kids will leave your office and say thank you on the way out, after you've just given them a consequence." And I think that's actually a good example of building that trust. The kids knew that if I was giving them a consequence, it wasn't because I disliked them, or if I disagreed with them, it wasn't because I disliked them or wanted to hurt them. It was because I had a job, and this was something that I had to do, and that I thought was in the best interest of everyone. And I think the same holds true at the level of superintendent. Everything that you do is watched. Everything you say, all of your actions are under the microscope. So that trust comes from modeling the correct behavior first. Secondly, you can't just wait for people to come to you. And I think that's a big mistake that school leaders typically make. They wait, they say, "Well, you know, I have a good relationship with the town side. I, you know, if they send me an email, I respond." It's not exactly what you need to do, in my opinion. You have to be much more proactive than that, reach out to people, and reach out to the people who you think don't matter. For example, recently, I got invited to a men's group. They wanted to meet with me. I said, "Men's group? What is it?" And it was at the senior center. And it was a group of probably 25 men, roughly 75 to 85 years old. And they wanted to know who I am, what I stand for, what I believe in, and we talked. And I left that meeting knowing that those guys felt good about knowing who the high school principal was, and I think that they trusted me when I left that room. So some people would have said, "Whoa, colossal waste of time." No, not really. It was a really important step, because if I were to ask for something down the road in Wellesley, what if I were to become the superintendent in Wellesley and I needed something? And I went forward to the public or to a town meeting, and some of those people were in the audience, they'd say, "I believe that guy. I've heard him before, he's consistent. This is what he sounded like last time I heard from him, he's still the same guy. I trust him." So I think that that trust comes from kind of who you are as a person. And then probably the most important thing is not allowing people to have reason to distrust you. So if they catch you, if, not if they catch you, if you decide to be dishonest or deceptive, whether they catch you or not, it is going to catch up with you. People will know sooner or later. So it's best to be straightforward with people and not run the risk that you would burn a bridge forever. So in my case, I've tried to just be honest all the time, and it's part of my own kind of core belief system, that you act a certain way, you carry yourself a certain way, and it pays dividends down the road.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Are you good with the entry plan?
Was there anything you wanted to add to your, to, just for the public portion of it?
For the entry plan? Yeah, I think that with the entry plan, what's important is that there's really three steps from my perspective. Somebody asked me today, "If you were to be hired, when would you start?" And I said, "Well, technically, July 1st, right? Technically." But actually, in reality, I would start pretty soon after agreeing to a contract, because no time can be wasted in this process. So the first step, I think I might have gotten into this, but I'll just elaborate on it a little bit more. The first step would in fact be setting up meetings. So my reaching out, again, proactively, not asking people to sign up, but proactively reaching out to anybody in a leadership role within the district, within the school system, for meetings. It would be actively reaching out to, and by leadership, I don't just mean administration. It would mean union representation, whatever leadership exists within the system, I would reach out to. I would also, and that could take some time, I'd have to arrange those meetings, and I'd have to come out here probably after work, or take some of my vacation time in order to do that. But I would make that effort and give people that time. I would also, so that's kind of phase one. Phase two would be to look for opportunities and ask people to invite me or include me in their activities. So if I were invited to a parade, I'd try to go to the parade. If I were invited to an end of the year celebration, I'd try to go to that celebration so that I could engage people and get to know them. And then finally, in the summer, I would open up my office for certain days of the week for office hours for people who wanted to drop in, whether they be parents, community members, teachers, whatever. I would make that opportunity available as well. So that's really three areas, three kind of different components of the entry plan. And in each instance, I would be asking, I'd ask three questions. What are the two greatest strengths of this system that cannot change? What are the two greatest, most significant areas of need in this system that must be changed? And what are two to three qualities or traits that you're looking for in the new superintendent? And from that, I would gather a base of information, a database of information, and I would be able to see trends. And I think I'd get a real sense from the community, what's working, what isn't, and where I need to target my energies.
Any other questions from the committee? No. You want to take a few minutes in closing statement?
Definitely. Well, so this has been quite an experience for me. I've learned so much, and I really want to thank all of you for including me in this process. I feel as if, I feel as if I have started on that road to getting to know all of you, and it's a good thing. I really appreciate the time and energy that you've put into it, and it's increased my faith in the system, in my faith in democracy, in that we have many different diverse opinions around the table, different experiences. And I know that you have to get together and talk about those differences and come to consensus, and that's not easy. But this has really been a demonstration of the fact that it can and does work. And so I want to first and foremost, thank you for that, because it does matter to me. I've said to many people in this process, I am a bit of an idealist, I still do care about things like that. I think you do too. I noticed in your mission statement, it was your mission statement or core values, I think it was mission statement, a mention of good citizens. This is good citizenship. I'm sure you have other things you could be doing. You're demonstrating good citizenship. This is the modeling that I was talking about earlier. So I appreciate that. I want to really just remind you who I am as a person. I'm an educator. I care about people. I care about our society. I love my family. And what you see is what you get. This is who I am. I've worked really hard to get here. I think I am prepared to be your superintendent. As I mentioned this afternoon, my doctoral degree was specifically a training for superintendents. There are many superintendents with a doctoral degree from Boston College, including, I believe, you could double check with them, Perry Davis. So he too went through the same program that I did. I am definitely prepared for this. At some point, people have to make a jump to the next level, and somebody has to say, "I'm going to try, I'm going to, I'm going to put my money on this person." As I mentioned last time, and I don't think I was specific enough about it, when I came to Blackstone Millville for the assistant principal job, I was coming from a program of 10 students, a special needs program with 10 students. It wasn't a school, a classroom with 50 kids. I didn't have a caseload of 100 kids. But I was successful, because my heart's in the right place, I care about it, I work really hard. And I would work very hard for all of you. And I'm excited about the possibilities. My meetings this afternoon actually really energized me, because people came to me to say, "If you are superintendent, we need this, we need that, we need this, we need that." And I felt as if they were demonstrating some trust in me right from the start. "We trust you to help us get forward, to move forward." So it was exciting, and I'm just hoping that I can have the opportunity to lead this district forward.
Great. Well, I mean, I can speak for everyone here that it's been a wonderful process getting to know you and your authentic self, that you kind of, you ooze authentic, you know, self in terms of telling us who you are, just by your closing statement. So, you know, we're going to deliberate tonight, we're going to make a decision, and then we're going to be in touch with you tonight.
Okay. Excellent.
Great.
Thank you.
Very good. Thank you very much.
Thank you again. Nice to see you, Andy.
Thank you.
Make the walk.
Doing the dance, huh?
Great.
Thank you very much.
Good to see you, Andy. Okay. See you, buddy.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Good night.
$4.44, something like that.
Is it used?
Yeah.
Thanks.
A lot of times, it's a little short. It looks like it's part of the shirt. You know, it's.
Okay. All right, we're going to move forward. It's 8:30. First, I want to go over for the public and for the committee, how we're going to move forward. Clearly, we're going to have a discussion and deliberate the tough decision that we have in terms of the two candidates that we've seen tonight. The method of the election is going to be a majority vote. It's required to appoint by motion, which includes, right now, it's everybody here. And it would require five affirmative votes for a candidate. What we're going to do in terms of the ballot method is the chair will call a roll call of each member, and each member will announce the name of the candidate of his or her choice. At the end of the ballot, I'll then announce the vote and ask if members have, make sure everyone, every member has voted, and I'll then declare the ballot closed and announce the vote. So just so clear how we're going to do it. So at this point, we're just going to start the discussion part of it, and if everyone would just kind of share their thoughts at this point in the process, and then we'll kind of go from there.
I'll break the ice.
Go ahead.
So first thing I want to do is just to recognize Aaron and Diane for the work you guys did with the committee, to the screening committee, the original screening committee, and all the people who participated in that, because I can't think of six better candidates to come forward and make our job more difficult. So really, it's been a challenge. I think the two finalists that we have were excellent. I think they're very different. I think they have different strengths, they come from different backgrounds, and they would bring different approaches to the district. So being less, you know, no more specific than that, I just think, you know, it's been a good process. We've got two good candidates, and I look forward to work. Now, do you want me to evaluate, say anything about the, you know?
You can say something about each of them if you want.
I think, I think Ms. Austin brings a good, more special ed background, has had a lot of exposure to administration, a lot of exposure to what a superintendent would be like, working very closely with the superintendent in Sutton. On the other hand, I look at Dr. Keough as somebody who's moved through the ranks, has a lot of experience working with kids, has a real passion working with kids, and I think brings a huge amount of integrity with him as well, so.
Mike? Okay. Well, I first of all, thank you to Diane and Aaron for, and the entire screening committee for a job well done.
Has had a lot of exposure to administration, a lot of exposure to what a superintendent would be like. I'm working very closely with the superintendent in Sutton. On the other hand, I, I look at Dr. Keough as somebody who's moved through the ranks, has a lot of experience working with kids, has a real passion working with kids, and I think brings a huge amount of integrity with him as well, so.
Mike?
Okay. Well, I, first of all, thank you to Diane and Erin for, and the, and the entire screening committee for a job well done. And also special thanks to the folks in Sutton and Wellesley who were very gracious hosts to Bill and I a couple of weeks ago. With regards to the candidates, I didn't want to sound like a broken record, so I want to repeat some of what Brian had just said. But obviously, Ms. Austin brings a strong commitment to education, a strong work ethic, as well as obviously she's, appears to be very driven and concise. And, and I think in her role in Sutton, that has played well to the, to her strengths after some of the conversations we've had with people up there. Dr. Keough, obviously, his strength is his compassion and his commitment to children and to, and to, and to others. That really kind of bleeds through, as well as, I believe that he would have a very strong connection to our, to sister communities, whether it be those that are officials, as well as those that are just the rank and file. Whether he's parent of fam, a person in a community, resident, so forth. So I think that, I think that that really does shine through. And, this is a, this is a, this is a crossroads for the district based, you know, upon all the pressures that are in public education. Significant budget constraints, you know, across the board, as well as, you know, timeless mandates and evaluations and all that noise that seems to be percolating almost as an attack at public education, not only in Massachusetts but nationwide. So I do believe that it's going to take a very strong leader and it's going to take a very strong individual that can balance all of these things. And, you know, I believe that, that's very important, so I'll leave it at that at this point.
Okay. I'd like to echo again all the people who served on the previous committees. People that came tonight, people that came the last couple of nights for some of the other interviews, that was great to see you out there. You know, we value your input. I'd also like to thank Perry Davis for serving in a very difficult position for the last year. I think when he came on, he said he was going to be working four days a week. I think he's worked five days a week, every single week. And he's, he's done a great job not, you know, keeping us, keeping the, the train moving forward. He's done a great job. And I think he's put our district in a good position to go forward. I think now we're really looking for a strong leader. We had two great candidates here tonight, very different people. And I think they will both be very good superintendents someday, both of them. Again, they're very different. I think we need to look at who would be the best leader going forward for our district. And I think we met one tonight.
Okay. You know, I, I, I think they're two very strong candidates. You know, I really liked Margot and how she's driven. She clearly does her homework, she came to the tours, knows everybody's names. I know I said that last time. I, I liked her experience as a leader in the district learning team. You know, I liked her drive in terms of the, the five-year strategic plan that she, she, she developed within the district. You know, Dr. Keough, I liked, you know, I said it earlier, I liked, he has, he has an authentic way about him that clearly cares about kids, clearly can build community relationships that he values. I don't think he, you know, I don't think he blows smoke up, you know, to people. I think he, what he says, he means and he feels. And I, I liked the fact that he, he really lives and breathes by his core values. And I think that's a, that's a good, good leadership quality.
I would also like to thank myself and Diane for all of our time and energy, which was immense. It was not easy at all to come down to six, to two, to, to three is what we actually had. And I, I, I absolutely agree with everything that you guys have already said about what each of them brought, would bring to us. I think we've been very clear from the beginning on what we know we need for our, our district to be able to move in the direction. And I absolutely agree with Steve about Dr. Davis getting us in that right direction. And, and, you know, we need to keep moving in that direction. And I do believe that, that both candidates will be wonderful superintendents during their journeys. And I do think we met someone tonight that can get us where we need to be.
My turn. I think when we started the search with Nezdeq, I think we had some things in mind. I think we had, our goal was curriculum, our goal was finance, and I know the stakeholders wanted a community builder. I think that we met, we met them tonight. I think, you know, the search committee did an excellent job bringing them forward. I think they both have different styles, but I think both of them would be a, a good asset to this district. They are very different, so I think the question is, you know, what do we need right now to move our district forward? To build morale, to build trust? And I think we found that one.
Great, thanks.
I'd like to thank the committee as a whole for entrusting Erin and I to that very difficult task. It was very time consuming. The search committee really, screening committee really came together. And for a group of people, I think there was 12 or 13 of us, that really hadn't worked together before. By that last night, boy, we were having a grand old time for ourselves. But it was a very important decision, and it is a very important decision that we need to make, so thank you for that. And again, I think it goes back, and actually, I'd like to thank Nezdeq, because Nezdeq really walked us through this process. I don't think we could have gotten where we are and gotten the candidates that we did without them walking through us, walking through the process with us. And I think it goes back to that original survey and what the community said that they were looking for. And either one of those candidates, again, everybody has said it, they, they will both be excellent superintendents someday. And I, so I think it's just a matter of coming down to who best meets our needs and our children's needs right now. So, that's all it's going to come down to.
Okay, thank you. Thank you again, Erin, Diane, for being on that search. I agree, they're both, they're both excellent candidates for the job. And I, I feel as though everyone said their pluses and minuses thus far. And I think tonight we'll choose the rest, best one for the job.
Any other discussion?
Just one point of Mr. Chairman, and I just, just throw this out for informational, that the young lady that was from the school that was, was, was a student, I believe her name was Allison?
Oh, on the committee, Allison?
She had the opportunity today to, to meet both of the candidate finalists. And I just want to thank Dr. Davis for making that happen. I sent him an email like last week, maybe we could, I think Tom and Morgan were tied up, so at least she got to come over and, and meet both of them. So, I just want to thank her for the, for her time as well.
Any other discussion? Okay. With that, we will move to do a roll call vote of each member. And at the time, each member will announce the name of the candidate of his or her choice. So Brian?
Dr. Keough.
Mike?
Dr. Keough.
Steve?
Dr. Andrew Keough.
Uh, myself, Dr. Keough. Erin?
Dr. Keough.
Wendy?
Dr. Keough.
Diane?
Dr. Keough.
Kathy?
Dr. Keough.
Okay. So it is 8-0, so I declare that the vote and the person who is appointed. So Steve is going to make a motion right now?
I move that Dr. Andrew Keough be appointed to the super, I'm sorry, start it again. I move that Dr. Andrew Keough be appointed to superintendent of schools for the Blackstone Millville Regional School District subject to the successful negotiation of a contract of employment mutually agreed to the candidate and the school committee.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Wendy? All those in favor, so are you going to say an aye?
Aye.
Unanimous. That concludes our part of the meeting. We are now going to, going to executive session due to matters pertaining to the contract of the superintendent. So I'm going to need a motion for that as well.
So I'll move Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Buckley?
Second.
Second by Ms.
Whoever I am.
I'm sorry. We have to do a roll call vote for that? So Brian?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Steven?
Yes.
Yes. Erin?
Yes.
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 Yes. Thank you.
We will not be returning to open session.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thanks, Joy.